I'd like to call it a order. The Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, Special Meeting of January 19th, 2023. The time is now 4:03. I'm Jeremy Hooper, and I'll be serving as your Chair tonight during this work session. I'll point out that we do have six members of the board with us. It does represent a quorum. However, there will be no action, official action by the board taken during this. It'll be a feedback session for staff. First item, I'd like to welcome a new board member to us tonight, Bruce Heronimus. Welcome, Bruce. We'll let you do the honors of introducing yourself. If there's anything that you feel that the board needs to know about you, please say so, and then we'll continue on around with.
Thanks, Jeremy. I'll be very brief and just follow up with that introduction. Pleased to be joining this group. I know a little bit about work that has been going on, but obviously not sitting in these chairs and dealing with the past several years of pretty intense activity. So I hope that I can get up to speed and use some of my experience and help going forward. So thank you very much. Appreciate your help and assistance with me.
I am David Elzamora. Are we introducing ourselves to Bruce as well? So yeah, we were talking before the meeting, but I grew up in the area. My wife and I lived in Pinehurst for a little bit. We just recently moved to Southern Pines. But I'm a real estate attorney. I focus on residential real estate mostly. Also do some estate work at Van Camp, Meacham, and Newman. But yeah, welcome, welcome aboard.
Jack Farrell, welcome aboard, Bruce. I've been a resident or associated with the Village of Pinehurst for 60-plus years and been on a number of different boards, so hopefully we can be some assistance to you as you go forward. You'll find out, maybe, maybe not.
And welcome, Matt Jones. Lived here since 2009 with my wife. We have two little girls and a third one that was supposed to be here already, but we don't know if it's a boy or girl. So it's he or she is still really comfortable and is staying where they are. So I am here, and I'm a civil engineer. I primarily work in water and sewer, but I do not drive a train, as my daughter thinks. Engineers get credit for a lot of things. Welcome.
Bruce, welcome aboard. Paul Roberts, look forward to working with you. Retired military, been in Pinehurst for a while, and currently still working as a defense contractor. Thank you.
That's all Paul can tell you.
Let's go take a quick second. Alfred, how about you go ahead and introduce yourself, possibly Bruce.
Welcome aboard, Bruce. Pleasure to have you. My name is Alfred Cassidy, Senior Planner with the Village. Been here since May, since May of last year. Live in South Carolina.
I'm a planner here. I've been here since May, and I came over from Aberdeen, but I've lived in the area for about four years now.
Darren Burge. We've met before. I've been here since June 3rd of 2019, and I'll be here through February 3rd of 2023. So this is my second-to-last meeting. I'm sad to leave you all. Very excited about my opportunity, which I've told you about, but I'll only be here for a little bit of time yet. But I've also said to Alex, there's a lot of projects that we have hanging right now that I'm going to help out on my own time to get these things through, because I do feel very strongly about these documents.
A lot of work today.
Well, I'll have more spare time, hopefully.
Rub it in. Hey, Bruce, nice to see you again. Obviously, we got to meet during the interview process, so I'm very glad to have you aboard. And I know that you will be able to contribute right away to the work. And obviously, there's a lot of it still to do, and a lot of it, I'm sure, that will come. Darren said he's sad to leave, but not as sad as I am for him to leave, for a lot of reasons most of you already know. But welcome aboard, and I'll be primary staff liaison and contact, and we'll be utilizing Alfred and Maria as fit. But those two, and Kathy Lyles is also here, and just let her wave her hand. Kathy, I'm going to lean on a little bit more, so you guys will probably be having some FaceTime and interaction again with Kathy. So we're all very fortunate to have Kathy with her many years of experience in planning and in Moore County.
And just to add to that with Kathy, right now, she's going to be working, she would spend a lot of time in addition doing other planning stuff for us, but she is actually working on some of the drafts of the language for the Form Based Code. So the Form Based Code, which, there was a miscommunication between Shannon and I, we had hot off the presses that the Form Based Code that we've been working on for the last few months, that's the Pinehurst South Plan, that's the, that's the, that's the plan that's, that's the final Pinehurst South Plan, so you can take a look at that. But we have a Form Based Code that we're going to hand out tonight. We'll make copies of that and get it for you within the next week. But, you know, all the hard work that you've done over the course of the last four months, four or five, four months or so on this is in this document. So all the work that we, that we've put into it, this is kind of that final, this is kind of the final draft that we're going to, I'm actually putting this in Novus for a work session next Tuesday with council, so we can start, you know, start the, kind of the formal review process on this. This is the document that, from which the PDO amendments are going to be drafted from. So I'm very excited that we, that we've got this, some form of completion. So I'm very happy and I'm very proud of where we are with this. So we'll get you copies of this document hopefully next week, but it will be up in Novus probably this afternoon and for the council work session.
Kind of two topics there. One, welcome. You can tell that we have a lot of experience and a lot of talent on the board, so we're excited to have you join that. And then, of course, you know, second-to-last meeting for Darren. So we'll, we'll discuss that a little more in the last meeting. We'll have our goodbyes. But that's, you know, moving on to our first item of general business, which is to discuss the Village Place and Pinehurst South Form Based Codes. I'll turn it over to Darren to continue.
Well, I kind of did, I kind of did the introduction of the Village Place Form Based Code. I've got it pulled up on the screen. I don't want to really go into it at this point, because you don't have the documents with you, so you can't be paging through it. So what, what we're going to do is we're going to just jump right into, we're going to, we're going to go over the regulating plan for Pinehurst South. Alex is going to go over some of that stuff. We had hoped to start working on the table of uses and start going through that. We haven't got that done yet. We are working on it, but just, just the way things are in the department. But Alex is going to start out with, and we'll get that hopefully the next time through, potentially on February 3rd. Hopefully, we can turn to it on February 3rd. We might have a, yeah, no, second, February 3rd is my last day. February 2nd, we may have a public hearing that day, and maybe we'll be able to turn to, to those two items on that night. Alex is going to just take up and do the Pinehurst South Regulating Plan.
And so we can run through the regulating plan a little bit, but depending on how, how much time that, that takes of the group, Bruce, I know it's going to be your first opportunity. I know you were going to, you planned to tune into our last meeting, so you, hopefully you're somewhat up to speed, but to kind of be an active part of the discussion. If we have time, maybe that allows you and Shannon to be able to get that, that form ready, if we can go through this enough time, because we also have the other agenda item too. But time permitting, we can do that. So what you guys have in front of you is a hard copy that passed out, and we have it here on the screen. This is a updated regulating plan for the Pinehurst South based on where we arrived as a, as a board from the last meeting. This is still a draft form. There are some items that still need to be addressed. Our, our GIS analyst has been out a little bit this week with family on this, so he has been outstanding to work with, and he hadn't got the credit that he deserves for putting a lot of this stuff together, and we're having to give feedback based on our meetings. And he's incorporated that. So there's still a few changes that need to be made, but in large, you'll see a lot of the, the changes that, that we discussed from the last meeting. I know there was some comments about being able to clearly tell where the existing streets are versus where maybe the proposed are. The best way that we tried to tackle that at this point was to kind of show the existing center lines with the labels there, so that does kind of help give as, as good of a detail as we probably can at this point, showing where the existing street network is, and then you can tell the difference about where the proposed network's going to be extended throughout the, the planting area. If you look here, just the north side here of Monticello, this outside the, the boundary, we're going to have this removed as well as we did this other portion up there that, to the west that we discussed at the last meeting. The building stories here for this Block I, this purple shaded area is going to be one to two and not one to three, so that you can, you can kind of mark that off, and we'll, we'll make sure that's addressed.
What you wanted to say again?
Block I.
Okay.
The purple shading. It's those currently zoned OP parcels. We also discussed the open space or the, the park rendering area here. We're going to pull down Block C building types to match up here up against Block E. So again, we can't dictate where that park is going to go, so we got to have some sort of building type for that area in case something were, were to be proposed. So that shading and those types are going to come down to meet with Block E. That is pretty much, other than a placement here with the building types over the building heights there in Block E, to kind of, so they don't conflict with each other. Those are the few changes that we, we plan to have incorporated with the regulating plan. So with that, we can, I, I don't know that the desire is to go block by block again. We did assimilate some of the blocks because they were so similar. Also, this little area here of open space, this triangle, we're going to just bring down Block B to meet with Block F. So that's the other change that we're going to do. There was also, you know, something we, we talked about, that we kind of tabled for later that I've been looking into, and I've brought Kathy into some of the discussions, and we were able to with our GIS software. And to, without getting too much into the detail, a lot of this stuff had to be geo-referenced based on a PDF, so there's, there's some offsetting. The placement's not perfect. We didn't have CAD files or anything that we could get to really put in there, but what we've been able to determine is we are in really good shape with respect to where the proposed blocks and some of the street networks are. With existing parcel lines, we will be easily able to adjust and get these blocks to snap to those parcel lines, so there won't be any, any confusion on staff's end in order administering where these boundaries are going to be. We feel very, very comfortable and confident with that. There'd be, some adjustments would need to be made, but luckily, where the parcel lines are in this area, I am largely too, because of some of the, the size of the lots, or the parcel lines there, we're going to, we're going to be able to get them to meet up pretty good. We feel very confident.
Is that also true for the west side of NC 5?
Yes, it is. You can, I mean, you can see some of, there's a lot of straight lines and right angles, which helps us out immensely with this.
Right.
But you can kind of see, they generally follow there on the west side, just the butts directly there to Highway 5. There's four parcels here, we, and then obviously with one building type or one block, pretty much all to the west side of that, that it's going to take care of a lot of the lining up there. We have, again, some pretty good angles over here where the, to the east of the Mahaly Track. We have the areas here in the Jackson Hamlet neighborhood that can easily meet up right here. It's, it's going to be in good shape.
And there's one large parcel on the very west part of the western side of, which actually already has a road, doesn't it? The curving road?
And then Holly Pines.
Yeah, that one and, and the other one on the far west. Yeah, okay, great. That answered a concern that I had about aligning the, to the extent possible at this stage, the blocks with the parcel boundaries.
Well, and the good news with part of that, Jack, is if you go on some of these blocks, even if, even if they weren't lining up with some of the parcel lines, the building types and most of, the proposed building types and building heights on both sides of that line were all the same. There was, the one big exception is probably that number nine, the hotel over on the east side of NC 5. That was probably the only considerate, that would probably be the only one where we'll run into a potential issue, but we are, that's becomes the mechanics of how we apply the actual map.
Okay, thank you.
So where, where.
And there's language in there that where boundary lines or building use types, yada, yada, that, you know, we have the ability to interpret based on the proximity or the amount.
It's not ideal. It's never, it's never ideal. We like it to match up wherever possible. We've, have we managed in the community with split zone parcels? Yeah, but we try not to do that if, if at all possible.
It doesn't make, ultimately, it's going to be our headache, so we, we don't want to cause too many of those ourselves.
Oh, it's much easier in Village Place where we almost broke up the blocks by known boundaries.
Yep, it was.
But, I mean, at this point, I mean, this is kind of like a doctrinal template, you know, so does it matter what the current parcel lines are? Because someone's going to go in there and buy multiple parcels, and, you know, that line is no longer, so, yeah. So, I mean, you, you templated it to what you want to look like, knowing that the majority of this property is privately owned. Someone goes in there, a developer, let's say, starts to acquire property, you know, it's going to move around, and then you may have your holdouts, you know, that you're going to have to move around. Yeah, sure.
As long as we're not dramatically asking for variations on one parcel that is uses, if the uses are dramatically different in the middle of a parcel, that can be problematic, I would think. But I don't see that happening the way it's laid out.
I think if you go at it, that, you know, this is not going to be the plan that's executed. You know, it's going to be something along those lines.
Right, this is aspirational at this point.
Sure.
I would also think that if we, if staff was able to draw the lines, you know, along the lines of the parcels as much as possible, it would help with some future, you know, any sort of plans that came to place.
Okay.
Just some thoughts. Or with our missing board members tonight, I know we asked for some, some feedback from the board. I know Jack gave some, so I'd like to make sure we discuss that. Was there any other feedback from any of the board members that maybe was, that may be missing?
On this topic, I haven't seen any.
No, I haven't seen any top, anything on this topic. The only thing I do recall, and I don't know, did, you know, there was some discussion on the east side in that residential area on the building heights. We settled on one to two stories of the building heights over on that side, right? I think that's where we ended up settling. I just wanted to make.
Not uncommon to see townhomes that are three stories high.
Yeah.
Guess that would be just a matter of if someone comes forward with a proposal like that, whether it could be addressed later on.
The issue, and you're right, and that's probably, that may be the better way of doing it, because if you just lay, if you just say three, then any building, you know, it could be a mixed-use building, it could be any of the buildings, could actually, or like an apartment building going back there, which apartments can go back there, could go immediately after three stories.
There was some conversation about, kind of in the Block H, I think, as it's been redrawn, possibly some, some three-story building heights in the middle of that, but that would cause you to have another breakout of a block, I believe. But I don't know where, as a board, I don't recall what we settled on. Was it three or two?
That.
In which block?
Block, well, between, really between Trotter Hills, showdown there, yeah, there you go. I think it was really, wasn't it? Yeah.
I think it was the lower part where that was considered.
Oh, yeah.
But then the, the topography of that land there, since it slopes from five to Pinehurst behind it. I remember it had been discussed, but with that in consideration, I think we'd kept it at two.
I made a comment that I think so.
I'm really bringing it up because if I recall correctly, Jules.
He did.
He had the passion around it being three, and I just wanted.
I made a comment about three too, because I thought it would be a good bookend, you know, especially that farthest western border, you know, even that southern border. If you had a three, and David made a good point, it does slope down, so it's not like you're putting a three-story building on the highest point, you're putting in the lowest point.
Well, it's, it's good from five, but then the existing neighborhood behind it, I think, would be.
Are we talking about the bottom along the line? Okay, I was talking about the middle where.
You were talking about that.
Talking, originally, I was talking about the middle. That was her.
But I think what David's saying is on the perimeter, if you have tall buildings, you're, you're bordering other residential neighborhoods, and it may be overwhelming and not a good transition.
Right here, well, right here.
It may be good to border, which are, some of those other areas. Where Holly Pines comes in, those two specifically outlined by the green area, I think allowing three stories there could be a separate block, whether that's, you know, too exclusive, you're, you're limiting it too much for that size, I don't know. But, you know, that way, you're not necessarily impacting the neighbors as much as you would right on the perimeter. And it's low enough in relation to five where you're not, you know, it's just not a giant building right on the road there.
If, if someone came through with a proposal for a three-story and a block where, at least in the, we ended up with a two-story requirement and/or in the code, that would be a conditional zoning, not a conditional, right? So it would be a variation from.
Correct.
And if someone needs a three, they would ask for a conditional zoning change, is that correct?
Correct. Have the adability, yes.
Right, okay.
Correct.
My opinion settles that, for the most part, I mean, unless someone feels different. Whatever topic from staff, anything else? I mean, Jack, do you care to kind of elaborate? You had, you had a couple of concerns, which I thought were also concerns, possibly, if I recall correctly, you may not have felt that we discussed the hotel situation.
Yeah, one was the hotel situation. I was, needed some clarification on where that came from, and I spent an hour or two going through the documentation and found out where it did come from. It is mentioned quite frequently in the, in the documentation that a hotel residence in this area is, is a likely scenario, so I'm, I'm fine with that.
But I, I think from just the standpoint of what our community would desire and want, I, I do think it's going to be a pretty difficult ask, and, and you're saying that you found it in.
Oh, yeah. I did a, luckily, it's a PDF document, and you can do a search on hotels and find out every occurrence of the word hotel in all the documents, and look.
It wasn't there. I thought, I thought it wasn't there, I just couldn't.
Even in the maps, it manages to pull the word out of, out of the map. Yeah, amazing.
And I think when, when, when they put the market analysis together, part of it, part of it was, they said, yeah, there's a room for hotel in the market as.
Fifteen occurrences in this document.
There's room, and they said, you know, it, it could be, a hotel could locate in either Village Place or, or Pinehurst South. And it became, if one located within, you know, within the next five to 10 years, probably, there would be less of a market for another one to locate in one of the other places. So I think that was some of that, some of that discussion.
I want to pass the buck. You know, if we don't feel, you know, unanimous as a board to make that change, then I don't want to. I'll just make the statement that if we make a decision like that on a plan today, but it's not, it's a little bit contradictory to possibly what we want as a community, when it actually comes to, you know, as it comes into a development, then it would be a concern. So that's, that's the only point, and I'm not so sure the community wants that. We hear a lot about Highway 5 traffic, we hear about building heights, we also have Jackson Hamlet along the side, so that's my own personal feeling on it. But as a board, if we don't want to recommend that change to staff, then I fully support that as well.
I think with the development that's going to be happening, happening at the other end of five in Aberdeen, you know, that, that perspective could change some. And, you know, it's also, if, if, if the village fills up, if, if the resort fills up, if, you know, there isn't space village proper, and people do want to, you know, enjoy what, what Pinehurst has to offer, then it provides them a closer opportunity than, you know, where the other lodging availability is. And it's also, you know, I don't think we need to worry about the appearance or it not fitting in with the character of whatever else is going on because of the, the development regulations that'll be in place with the Form Based Code.
And, and you have a building height, at least on the books, that says one to three, and so to a great extent, you can control the, the character of the hotel should it be proposed.
And architectural standards. There's some strong architectural standards in there.
Right. Well, I think we've satisfied that. I think, to my point in the previous meeting, I wanted to make sure that we had that discussion, that we didn't just pass the buck on the council through here, and that make sure that we threw out kind of pros and cons, which I think. What was your other concern, or was it?
Oh, it was the, it was the alignment of the blocks, and we discussed that previously.
And, and, I mean, once we continue the work in Pinehurst South like we did with Village Place, there'll be a package like we want to show you with Village Place of what that Form Based Code looks like. Then there will be feedback from council, and there will be public hearings, so we will have, I mean, we will be able to have that input from the public and whether or not we're, what the community feel is.
Definitely highlighted at this point in time that there is conversation of, you know, the hotel use on that.
Hasn't been taken lightly, yeah.
One thing from last time, just to make sure you have it on your list, we talked about adding, I believe, to Block A, the lots on the east side of Parker Lane.
Yep.
Oh.
Could be.
It's on there.
I'm not looking at the most updated one, that's why. Yep, you did that. Well done.
The credit goes to Justin, sorry.
Way to go, Justin.
Yeah.
Oh, the credit goes to you.
I mean, a little bit off, a little bit off-topic, but, you know, Ed built out estimates for population and then day travel. Were those provided?
We have, yeah. We do, we had, no, I thought we had that in there. Should be in there at the end.
I'll, I'll search for that, that's.
Well, there's, there's, there's trip.
How to find things.
There's TripGen in there. Now, the, you have to take any, you know, all the, all the TripGen and all that with a, with a huge grain of salt, because we just don't know. TripGen is easy when you know what the act, what an actual building is, what the specific use is. When you, yeah, and square footages, so these are all just generalized over the course of time. So you got to take that with a huge grain of salt, because the most accurate one is the one responding to.
What other areas of the plan does staff want to make sure they highlight to us to get any sort of feedback on any at all?
No, the fun part will come next.
Yeah, the fun part comes next. Board members, any sort of feedback you feel, anything on this plan that we have not covered that you want to speak on? Good start. Anybody want to? Bruce, first meeting? You catching up? Okay, okay. All right, so if we've satisfied staff's response, we can move on to number two.
Number two? Oh.
Okay.
That means I'm up.
Got enough from us. All right, with that, let's go ahead and move on to general business.
Before you leave, what's going, our next steps is we're going to go through the components of the Form Based Code relative to this, like we did with the.
Yes.
Okay.
The two, the next step would be the table of permitted uses and the dimensional requirements.
Table permitted uses key, obviously, and then we work on dimensional requirements, building types, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
Great.
And whereas, you know, and depends on how, how narrow we, how narrowly we want to tell are these areas. As you, as you can recall, in, in Village Place, we really spent a lot of time narrowly tarrelling some of these blocks to try and meet the vision of that particular area from land use perspective.
Hopefully, since we've been through this once before, it may be a little bit more.
Be familiar.
Yeah. No, I mean, we won't have to ask the same dumb questions. We can dream up some new dumb questions.
Hey.
Right.
Or rehash, we tend to rehash some.
Right.
So we would hope, we're hoping to get something on the next, at the next Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, if we, if we can get there. And that'll be also depending, well, first, we're trying to get, we're working hard to try to get that done. Secondly, we're still, we still may have a public hearing that night, so if we have a public hearing, we are, I'm sorry, we are, as of right now, going to have a public.
Likely, unless, unless something falls through Monday or Tuesday.
And if we have, so if we have a public hearing that night, and depending on how potentially, how many people show up for that meeting, how potentially controversial that could be, that could depend on whether we can get to, get to the actual table of uses.
And it's a conditional district rezoning with the general, I mean, we can, Jeremy, if you're okay, while we're already talking next steps and scheduling, which is very important, we can just kind of rearrange the agenda a little bit, the upcoming items, if you like, then we can get back to the item number two. It's going to be for a conditional district rezoning and review of general concept plan. It's going to be for a conditional district rezoning and review of general concept plan. So it's, it's not a text amendment that, you know, we've been talking a little bit about or going to talk about that you would expect, hours of, of discussion, comment, deliberation, et cetera, and maybe no recommendation, at least, or a continuance. It's, it's, you know, it, this, it would be smart to budget a good couple of hours, as always, for conditional district rezonings and a general concept plan, but I, I, it's kind of hard to gauge just how much time or how much energy the board will have to want to really get into anything, and the board has been very open and to having special meetings. I mean, we've been, we've been meeting together a lot lately, and we, we're going to have that need going forward as well.
Okay.
So if it's not the February second meeting, maybe after that meeting, we can at least look at our calendars and book something two weeks out.
Okay.
But we, we can still work on getting the, the material ready, and if we have time, we have time to do it, if we don't, we don't.
Exactly. That falls hard over there.
So we know that we're not stepping into an ordinance change, so it's, you know, it's going to be a general concept plan possibility. I think some of the board feedback on our, the time allotments to our meetings, you know, could have something to do with a lot of our special meetings that we're had every, every couple of weeks, so I think that heads up to what we're facing is appreciated.
And, and what staff will do, we, we have to send out the hearing notification, it's going to run in, in the paper this Sunday, so everyone in the public will be able to see it. Staff can share the public hearing notification, this is very general, it's, it's for a proposed zoning use for a, a hotel conditional district rezoning out near the, um, number eight clubhouse area for nine buildings for a, a lodging of up to 52 rooms.
Could be pretty extensive conversation.
It could be. So anyway, we can share that with the whole board as we've done before, so you, the whole board understands what's, the agenda's going to be to some degree before the agenda's live, which will be about a week from today.
Today, we'll have a little more information on the agenda, and I think as a board, what I'm hearing is we should probably rest up and prepare for a minimum of a couple of hours on that night, and then some, you know, depends on where, where the applicant probably has prepared.
Three February, it'll be a light day in Darren's office, I would imagine.
Yeah.
So he'll be okay.
Hardly. Chain him.
Thanks for that input, so are we prepared now to move on to general business B as well?
Please.
So let's discuss, um, the potential amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance. Again, no action will be taken on this tonight, I think staff's just using this again as another feedback session, if I'm not.
That's correct.
Correct, and let me get into a little bit of that, because I think, you know, there might be, there might, there might be some misinterpretation of, you know, what brought us here, why, you know, why we're here, what the function is, we're not, you know, right now, we're, we're in that, we're in the work session type format, that means, you know, we're utilizing the Planning and Zoning Board as a sounding board for some potential changes to the ordinance based on what, what we've drafted above. That's it, we're, we're asking you for opinion, because we, we need to bounce these ideas off of somebody, right? So we need to, so, you know, it starts at the staff level, we get the direction, we get the direction from the administration and from the council, so that's all flowing through, through to us, and, and with these particular amendments, these were, these were some of the points that were left hanging out during the SDR session, so we were asked to circle back to this, we're also going to circle back to home stays at some point as well, so, but this was one of the other things that we're circling back to, and so what happens when we do that, staff, then Alex and I, we start working on crafting, we know what the concept is, so we start crafting and working on the ordinances. We're working, we don't work at, at this in the vacuum, we're working at, at this, we actually, we, we do just bounce these ideas off, off of the, the Village Council, the Village Council is, is part of the discussions that we've had in crafting the product that you're seeing today, that you've seen, so basically, you know, what we've done is we've pre, we've created these potential, potential ordinance provisions, and we're just looking for some fe, some feedback for what you think of it, we're not, we're not asking you to embrace them, we, because we know that some of you might have concerns, but what we want to do is we want to get some feedback on what that language is, if we need to make some adjustments to that language, and that feedback we'll, we'll utilize when we actually move this forward, the next step after we get through this is, we're going to have, we're going to have a work session with the Village Council on this, from that, we're going to determine what the ordinance going forward is going to look like. So you're going to see this at some point in the future, what we think, but it's, it may be in a wholly different version with a bunch of different language based on, A, the feedback that you give us, B, some of the feedback that we're getting from the public, and we've got some public comments, some public feedback on that, and then what we're hearing at the council. So we're, we're going a different route than we've gone before on, on the development of this ordinance, I'm not saying it's good, bad, or indifferent, it is just a different route that we've taken before, but I, I really do think, you know, I'm a planner, we, we're planners, we've done this all our lives, we like working with the Planning and Zoning Board, we, we like to utilize you for that feedback because of the varied experience that this group has, so, so that's really where we are with this, with, with these protect, with, with these potential amendments. All that gets back to now the amendments themselves, and, you know, based on, based on the last set of discussion topics, we haven't received a huge amount of feedback, I mean, we have, have some minor feedbacks, and we're, I'm not going to get into individual words at this point, but some of the major points that we discussed last time, and I think we can continue to discuss going forward, and there's some things, I think we're kind of, we were losing members last time, so we couldn't fully vet through all this stuff, so I think some of the things that we, that we had heard were, that we've heard from the public is, should there be an effective date? Should, should this only apply to developments on the effective date of this ordinance, or should it be something that goes forward af, before and after the ordinance? That's one thing, we're not going to settle it, but that's something that, that we know is going to be a topic of, of consideration, and we need to think through, we, staff especially, need to think through some of that. The other thing, when it comes to the, the planned community neighborhood, the area containing at least 20 acres or 20 dwelling units, now, we depict that, and we've looked at, you know, because when we're, when we're looking at this, we were looking at some, maybe some subdivision developments, I know I was looking at some of the condominium developments and some of their sizes, and going, you know, when we designed this, we, we designed this to be more expansive within the community, not just, not just for one area.
That number is in the state regulations, too.
There's a 20, there's a 20 and 47F.
Right.
So that, that, that's also, that's probably one of the reasons, so, but, that is another reason, that is another, those numbers, 20 and 20, is another thing that, that can be up for discussion, if, if there's more concerns. What that does is it more narrowly tailors it to certain things, so, but that, on the other hand, you know, creates other issues that have been raised with, you know, with respect to, is it just being narrowly tailored for one area then? So our whole goal, when we were, when, when we were working on this, was to make this more expansive throughout the community, really, that, that is our goal, and that is why you see some of the language in here. So Alex, what other, is there any other general feedback requirements? The other, the, the one other thing that I did pick up from last, and we, we didn't really get a, a lot of chance to talk about SR 10, right?
I, I think the only talk, discussion was about, Julia raised the question about the other special requirements for, that was incorporated as part of the SDR amendments, and that they would be also codified with the neighborhood housing accommodation, and you, you addressed that.
And what I want to get into a little bit is just go over those again, so you, so you refresh yourself with SR 10, because there's one, there's one provision of SR 10 that I actually, I think we need some more comment on, and that's landscaping, the landscaping concern. So I want to, I want to talk a little bit more about that and how that looks. Right now, it's just, so.
Oops.
Weird, it makes, it makes sense in my mind, so, so, and that, and the other thing that we haven't done is, you know, we haven't really gone over the, the table of uses. So right now, I think we, we've got it pretty much Xed out across the board, and so we want to talk a little bit more about that and get some recommendations there, so. We can start out with the proposed definitions being, you know, the way, the way this really works is there, there's three main provisions, it's, it's the planned community neighborhood, so if you get defined as a planned community neighborhood, so, which is the, the development of 20 acre, 20 dwelling units or 20 acres, being within the planned community development kind of sets up for a new land use, a new land use classification. So we are proposing a new land use classification, and that's where it gets seated on the table of permitted uses, and that new land use, that new land use classification is neighborhood housing, neighborhood housing accommodation, and we say that a neighborhood housing, neighborhood housing accommodation is a whole, it's, it's similar, similar, but it's not the same as an STR, because it's actually being, this neighborhood associate, this neighborhood housing accommodation is being managed by a master association, so that leads me to the third main point of the definitions, is that master association being a nonprofit organization established under NCG, NCGS 47F, that's the, that I believe is the Community Planning Statute, and 47C is the, is the similar statute that's applied to condominium developments. And then we added some other things, and we'll probably end up having to tinker on this a little bit yet, but by declaration or its common law equivalent, that's where, that's where our attorney came in, with powers to enforce, enforce, adopt bylaws, blah, blah, blah. So, so this is, those are the three main parts of what, really what we're proposing to create this planned community neighborhood, because once you're in that, once you meet the definition of within the planned community neighborhood, then that opens up for this particular land, land use accommodation. So that, this is the basic proposal, again, it's going to be subject to change, we're going, we'll continue to hammer on this thing until such time as it, it comes up to an actual, it comes to you as an actual public hearing, and keeping in mind the feedback that we're getting, so I'm going to open it up on any discuss, any further discussion that we need to have on these particular, on these particular definitions, whether help clarify them, help us make it better, and I know that's a very subjective term, depending on what side of the aisle you're on, so I'm just going to open it up, Jeremy Ford. Let me ask this question, has there been any evolution of this since our last meeting? Any changes to this document that you possibly could highlight or explain? Not yet, we, we haven't changed anything yet, because right now, we're, we're still going off that last, the last meeting that we have. It is going, when I, when we talk to planning or Village Council about this next week, we're going to incorporate some of the comments and feedback that we, that we had, that we've gotten into that, into, into, into that, into those discussions with them, so, right now, everything's, everything's on a table for discussion as far as I'm concerned. Topic that you need some impact on, or some feedback on other than the landscaping portion of it at this point in time? I, I. Response from us as a. I need eyes, I, your eyes pick up things that sometimes we don't pick up, I mean, they really do, that's why, that's why we're here with all these, all this experience, all this experience helps us create a better product. So we can roundtable this thing, or if anybody has a burning topic, go ahead and throw it out there?
So the definition of planned community neighborhood, how many, I guess, where could that apply in, in Pinehurst at, at its current stage? Because, you know, the, that's roughly half the size of the Hollycrest development that we reviewed.
Pinehurst South cottages from a year or two ahead, ahead of that one.
But so how many more areas are available where this could be?
I might be able to help you on that.
Okay.
This morning, I thought through to myself, now, reading this definition, exactly that question, where would this potentially apply? And just off the top of my head, and I didn't even think of cottages, I came up with 28 different places where this potentially could apply, which I believe that they're large enough and they have associations, you know, that have declarations that are part of the deeds, et cetera, for example, Lakeview, St. Andrews, Linville, Gulf Terrace, Pine Valley, Walker Station, Pinehurst Trace, Pinehurst Manor, Lamb lighter Village, Spring Lake, Colonial Pines, Bretton Woods, Clerton Gardens, Lake Pinehurst Villas, Hollycrest, West Lake Point, Aronamick Townhouses, Aaron Hills, Point Clear, Lawn and Tennis, Forest Hills, Pine Wild, CCNC, Winston Pines, Abington Square, Juniper Creek, Cosswald, and Royal Oak, that's just off the top of my head. I suspect there may be another dozen, so it's widely applicable based upon this definition, and I'm not saying it's bad, that's good in my opinion, but this is a very broad-based, new type of lodging.
It is, but, it's applicable, but do they have the, do they have the necessary provisions in place to make that work?
Well, there's two parts to that question. One is, do they qualify as a planned unit development? And that's the list I was.
Yes, I know, I got it, Jack.
Obviously, very few, if any, have actually developed rules and regulations to allow this type of activity, because they never contemplated this activity.
Or had to.
That's a different question altogether, I think, but relative to associations that could potentially develop rules and regulations to allow for this type of activity, I think it's a very large number, probably well over 30, if not 40, different associations, neighborhoods within the, within the community.
There's two parts to that equation as well, Jack, there's the one, you're looking at just, you're looking at the physical development, the other, the other important consideration is this table right up here, table of permitted uses, so, you know, there's also.
Well, that table, these are all within that, within that area, I mean, most of them are multifamily, obviously, but not all, some are single family, standalone, so it's, it's a very long list of potential prospects for this housing type of opportunity.
But there, there's the other part where it has to be, then, then the neighborhood accommodation, neighborhood housing accommodation gets triggered, and then that's where we start seeding it within the potential zoning districts where that could be, so if you didn't have the, if you didn't have the definite, the new land use definition of a neighborhood housing, housing accommodation, and you just had the PCN, you're not going to create, you're not going to be able to create the neighbor, the neighborhood housing accommodation.
You can't execute that use.
Correct, that's what, that's.
You qualify if you choose to execute that use through your rules and regs and/or your declarations, is that correct?
That's, that's the idea.
Just can vote to do that.
That's the first qualifier, I guess, if you were to look at it that way, that's qualifier one, then qualifier two is that within that community, within that planned community neighborhood, you have that, a neighborhood housing accommodation.
It seems like we're migrating a little bit, though, I mean, original discussions were on sing, single-family neighborhoods, right? It wasn't at the multifamily locations like the condos, okay, so, I mean, it seems like we're starting to, all facts are not the same anymore, you know, now we're opening up the aperture a bit, because if I remember correctly, all the discussions we had in regards to renting a place less than 30 days was real focused on single-family residential neighborhoods, right?
That, that was the purpose from the original.
Okay, so, but now, you know, we're pulling and the condos never got restricted.
They did.
They did.
Okay, so when the decision was made by the council, it was restricted.
Because now it's, what, hotel and village mixed use? That's only.
Okay.
That's correct.
That's the hardest habit to remember early on.
But is the hardest job here. Is there an appetite or pressure to migrate and expand?
As, well, I mean, that, that will be a question once we, I think once we get it back up to the, the Village Council with this particular decision, we were asked, once again, these were a couple of those issues that were hanging out that weren't resolved when, when they adopted the ordinance, so there's enough appetite and, that we, that we've been asked to look at this issue once again. Now, whether that becomes too expansive, whether that def, whether this definition is too expansive, that's going to become a, a council policy decision at, at some point down, down the road. So that's where we're just trying to get that feedback, the conversation that Jack, Jack just said, it's over, it's potentially over 30, over 30 that he could just find, so we know that there's probably, there's more out there, so that is a discussion point that needs to be considered. When we go to council and say, you've asked us to look at this, this is the potential, these are the potential, and I'm putting in potential, because it's not easy, these are potential impacts that that could have, you need to now consider.
Not even sure why we would even begin to pursue this, you know, and the reason why I say that is we listened to, you know, quite a few people get up and speak, many of them who spoke in favor, didn't live in Pinehurst, lived in communities where it was significantly restricted, you know, or, and/or had a financial interest. I mean, you know, it's like, we're, we're carrying a heavy load through, over a path that we've already traversed, I'm not, I don't know why we even want to go do this again.
It's, well, remember, this, philosophically, you're talking about some of the philosophical things, we, we've, we're, because we've been, we've been asked to look into developing this, this is, this is a, this is a policy direction we've been asked to look at, because there is interest in doing that, that's why you're here, looking at it.
Carrying the heavy load over the same terrain again?
Yes.
Okay.
Fill up that hole.
I've done that in for a reason, purpose.
I guess where, where does the ability to create new definitions and uses stop? I guess where, where does the ability to create new definitions and uses stop? Because for all intents and purposes, these are short-term rentals. It, it's the same, if you boil it down, it's the same use as anybody who's, who doesn't have a master association or whatever else. But if we're not talking about short-term rentals, what other, I mean, what other definitions would a municipality be interested in creating, so to speak, in, in this similar way? Because it, it seems to circumvent what was done in September and October. So, I just, I, I guess I'm hesitant to sort of start that trend. You, like Paul mentioned, we, we've already dealt with this, but now we're, again, the way I look at it is creating something or trying to implement something that's going to circumvent exactly what we, you know, went through last, at the end of last year.
You can always modify the decisions you make at the legislative level.
I.
Or you can, you can, you can clarify what's been done, and you, I mean, there were things, like I said, I will, I'll restate home stays. We never finish up on home stays. We, we meant to get back to that, we, we got focused squarely on STR, so we haven't been able to get back to that. We'll get, we'll turn our, we'll turn our attention back to that. And I wouldn't say, when we reevaluate from, at the, at the policy, when the, when the five folks here at the policy level, they're reevaluating, I don't think they're, I don't think they're looking at circumventing themselves, they're looking at, they're looking at revising what was previously, what was, what's been previously approved, or adding to it, or clarifying it. I can't, I can't, I can't speak into, that's kind of the process that we're going under right now.
I think to jump on the back of David's point, I think it's fair to have the concern that here is an avenue now that could be manipulated, could be expanded into the community that burn against them, and then in turn, they could be expanded, expanded throughout the community. We could end up in a situation where we have a lot of the same concerns from our community added at the beginning, because we've provided an avenue.
I, I think that's right.
Process, in a way, convoluted process. And, and I'm sorry, sorry, but that was, I, I think that's my concern, it's fair that for us all to have that concern, regardless of what our original feelings on the subject were. And I think that's where, what I'm hearing from some of us, maybe from even different angles, but I think that's what I'm really hearing.
Well, let me, let me.
That's a fair comment, particularly having spent 20 years on HOAs and precedent of HOAs and so forth. I can tell you that it's likely a number of these potential candidates have very small executive boards and/or possibly one or two vocal people that sort of run the whole deal. It's, it's, it's common, we put it that way. And in fact, executive boards of an association, it's likely they do not require they be unit owners. The, the, the boards that I've been on, the HOAs I've been on, do not require that the members of the board of directors or executive board be unit owners. Yes.
They could be tenants?
Yes.
Well, that, well, that, that could be one of the things that.
That being the case, it's not.
Or for hire board.
A for hire board, that's correct. And in fact, I mean, you can, you can dream up the scenario where one or two people who own or don't own units in the development decide that they're going to implement this within the development through the rules and regulations, not through the declarations, which have to be, you know, two-thirds of the association has to agree and so forth and so on, but just by changing the rules and regulations. So, we just have to be careful what we're unleashing on the community and understand the qualifications for this type of thing. It's, it has, it has potential ramifications.
But where I would counter back on that is help me with some language that addresses some of those concerns. How, how do we do that? You just said something about there's a potential that people could be on the board that aren't owner.
Well, I'm not concerned about the board. The question is, is, is the neighborhood housing accommodation language in some way, shape, or form reflected in the declarations? In other words, in other words, it's been, it's been, it's in your deed, and it's registered in Moore County in the register of deeds, as people have agreed to it when they purchased the place, or they change their declarations in the future with a two-thirds majority to allow for this. To me, that would kind of give you at least some control as to where it may propagate.
Ask a question on your point there. So, are you saying that board members who are not always unit owners, then could it be possible that someone who is not a citizen of Pinehurst, that's outside of our community, then be driving something into our community at their own will?
Exactly, it's possible.
So, I think that's a concern. If, if board members of these master associations are now not citizens of Pinehurst, then.
Versus the citizens of Pinehurst, which always have good intentions.
Yeah. Well, we always get, always agree the same.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, they do have skin in the game, whether their intentions are good or not.
But, you know, the point is, is if, I mean, if, if we're going to cause our own roadblocks, might as well be us, not somebody else, right?
Right, right, right. So, those are the kind of what-if scenarios that you have to think through when we go down the road, because this is a dramatically different use than normally see.
This, this is, these are the types of comments and discussion that we need to have, because it, you know, I'm starting to write down some of these things. So, this can help potential, I don't, I don't know if it, I don't know if there's a silver bolt for any of that to, to address all of those concerns, but, you know, realistically, hopefully, we can incorporate some of these concerns into this language.
I know, and one, I'll just give you a, for a personal instance, in a HOA that I was on the board in Pinehurst, we decided to redo our declarations. And of course, as you know what, it was a struggle to get two-thirds of, of the unit owners, even if it wasn't a really terribly large unit group, but still takes a struggle to get two-thirds owning, and you have to get their agreement to change the declarations. One of the provisions we changed was to change the minimum lease on any unit from six months to one year. And so, people recognize, and that's what they wanted, they chose that, that option. So, that's why I'm saying that if this neighborhood housing accommodation were reflected in the, the document that is a part of your deed that you've agreed to when you purchased and/or agreed to change later on through the declarations, I would feel more comfortable than just having it be part of your rules and regulations that a, an executive board can change. In fact, they do change rules and regulations unbeknownst to the community in many cases, and they just discover it kind of after the fact. I, I don't mean to paint a bad black picture of this whole scenario, but I just want us to be realistic as to what we're.
This is exactly the feedback that we wanted here. And I, the other thing I want, there is a difference between what's being proposed here and the general discussion of just STRs everywhere in the community. What we're, what we're looking at with, with this are confined areas to specific types of developments. So, you're buying into a development, you're not, so if I'm in, you're into, into a development that's being run by an HOA potentially, or a master association, it's not, and it's being managed, the difference is, it's being managed by the association itself, whereas the STR, they're, you know, even where, for instance, where I live, one of the condo developments, all those condos are managed by everybody else, they're not managed through any central, any, any central entity. So, I think there, I think there is a different, there is a general difference between STRs virtually anywhere, well, all the knock and four ones that are out there virtually anywhere, and this, and this, and this specific proposal, because it's being confined to a specific development that people are buying into with the knowledge that this is a, that this is a potential, Jack's thing, which your, your, your discussion point of, I would want to see something reflected potentially in that, in the neighborhood accommodation of, or some sort, reflected in those bylaws. So, everybody gets into it.
Well, however, there's no doubt that this is a fantastic accommodation to, to associations within the village of Pinehurst. We're saying is, we are giving you, if this were forwarded and approved, we are giving you the option, should two-thirds, or at least some majority of the owners of the units decide to go down the path of allowing the association to lease units for less than 30 days, or less than 31 days, but, but the unit, all the members of that particular development should agree to that. And there should be strong evidence that they agree to it. And I just personally feel that the strongest evidence is, is in the declarations. That, that says to me that two-thirds of the unit owners at last, at that time, wanted this type of accommodation versus a change to the rules and regs through the executive board, which I think can more readily occur, and in some ways, it's easier to implement, but it may or may not reflect the, the desires of a majority of the unit owners. That's where I'm coming from.
Well, that's what we're asking.
At the outset of this, I had the immediate question in terms of how broad is the applicability of this, you know, throughout the community? And I appreciate you doing all that homework, you have learned a lot. I guess it's still elusive to me, and maybe it's just because I'm so, so fresh and green here, as to the appetite, as I refer to it as, and council wanting you to, you know, pursue and investigate this. Does that appetite stem from existing communities or neighborhoods, or those that were on Jack's list that, you know, want to expand their attractiveness to owners or prospective owners? I'm, it's eluding me as to the pursuit.
I think that response would have been, the council response would have been, that was some of the comments that they'd heard during those discussions. It wasn't that they, they hadn't heard that there was, that this wasn't a desire by some in the community.
And the specific comment was that.
To explore, to, to explore something like this. What we're proposing is, is, is a model that is already, already exists in the community. So, we were looking at codifying, potentially codifying with this language, that language in the, that, that model, but expanding the footprint of that model into other areas of the community. Which is legal, which is legal? Yes, so, yes. So, what we're, you're right, we're, you know, we were trying to, frankly, we were trying to, and it's been raised, we were trying to not just carve out one particular area for something utilizing this particular process, we were trying to make that more expansive. And I think we've come on, even though it might be difficult with some areas to achieve, I think it's something that, I think, it generally achieves it with the concept that, that we've been able to develop.
Could achieve it, though, by using a date, as opposed to like it applying to some new development or some new application coming forward, or are you?
That would be, that, the concern on that is, it would be potentially a carve-out, because you would then narrowly limit that to potentially maybe one, maybe one development. I'm not sure about the others, there could be others out there, but that could be potentially, potentially deemed as a carve-out. We'd have to look into that a little bit more.
And on kind of Bruce's point there, and I think something that's important for us to understand really is, what are we trying to achieve? And if it, in reality, if we're trying to achieve support of our golf-driven master communities in allowing them, you know, flexibility and some intention, you know, for their members, if that's what we're trying to achieve, my question in turn, similar to Bruce's, is there another path outside of maybe the master associate, the HOA, the master associated path that maybe we've gone down here, which I, I'm concerned about? Do we have another path that maybe, if that's what we're trying to achieve, is there a different way?
But it appears as though that decision is not going out to the residents who live in these single-family resident, or home communities. You know, it's, it's being done by, at a board level.
Think a little bit for me.
Okay, so, if, let's say if you just take community X, okay, with, that is governed by an HOA, single-family homes, they want to either initiate or grow their short-term rental program. Okay, are they going out and asking, going back to what Jack said with the two-third vote, you know, are they going back and asking the residents, or are they making this decision because they've got a profit margin that they need to show? You know, I mean, so, I, I see, I, I think I see where you were going, but, you know, a community that has their own, you know, centrally managed by, let's say, the entity, the company, short-term rentals, are they going out and soliciting input from the residents of that community?
Well, I mean, I personally would just.
I think the answer is no.
I, I'd like to kind of just get away from the whole HOA avenue of this thing, is really my concern, because I think it could expand into something in our community that could be manipulated. That's, that's my concern.
Yeah.
And kind of prolong your points there, we're reflecting.
They're, they're not getting a vote.
What's that?
They're not getting a vote.
Yeah.
You know, and we heard, I don't know, 100 residents who were concerned of that.
Well, and what, one of the concerns for me is, what's, why is my property, you know, because I'm not in a planned community neighborhood, less valuable than someone who can achieve this status? And what is my ability to fall under this, you know, provision? If it's possible, but, you know, incredibly burdensome, then, you know, my property's being treated differently than others by virtue of, you know, not having a, a master association, which.
It could also increase the value of property. I'll give you an example, what we did, what we did at the beach, okay, different community, but our HOA removed the opportunity to rent our condos, you know, oceanfront condos, and it actually, we had a line of people who were in line when our places go, because they do not want to be, you know, in an environment where it's rented every week. So, so our, so we added value to our property.
And I, I think it, that would work if the decision had not been made to stop new short-term rentals, if, if they were still allowed completely, and, you know, communities had the same ability to do what they have been, you know, historically, and allow what they want to within their own association. But because we've stripped a property right from the entire, you know, the village, from, from everybody who did not previously operate a, a short-term rental, and now we're affording that to somebody, some other groups by virtue of, you know, their organization under some master association, I, I see, see some problems there, because even though, yes, you can technically go through whatever steps it would take to meet these definitions, when, when that's applied, the likelihood of that happening is so, so low and so burdensome for whoever wants to achieve that, they basically, they don't have that right or ability.
Who are, who are in, you know, this unique community, that they as individuals could meet the same requirements as others, and give them a period, a similar period of time to meet those standards?
It's on.
You gotta be near it.
You'll catch that habit.
I don't know if that would be a potential opportunity, rather than expanding it and opening it up for, you know, others, but if we were to grandfather.
It's already, it's already granted, the STRs are already grandfathered in place.
Or those who are operating.
Correct.
But what if, what if somebody wanted to at some point, but it just wasn't, you know, wasn't a priority at, at any point in time? You know, say I, I lived in Pinehurst, owned my home for the last 15 years, and I was going to turn it into a short-term rental and, you know, move to Florida when I retire, now I can't do that.
Freaking.
Can I? Can I get 20, 20 of my neighbors, or 19 of my neighbors to join me?
I don't know that. You might. I mean, you might, I mean, that's, it doesn't preclude that from occurring, maybe, it might be a higher sta, it might be a. Maybe, it might be a higher sta, it might be harder to achieve, and maybe that's, maybe that's not a bad thing. I mean, it might not be a bad thing.
So Darren, here's my comment, one of them, and we talked about this already, but, well, one, I want to confirm what the table of uses, what's in here, because I want to make sure I understand it.
Mm-hmm.
In the table of uses, the highlight is what's proposed as a result of what's been drafted in the document. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's just for, that's, yeah. Uh, no, yeah, it's, yeah, it's this. I don't know why that's highlighted, that shouldn't be highlighted, but yeah.
Well, that's what I was going to ask about under the short-term rental.
I don't know why that's highlighted, that's a miss, so.
Because, well, because, I guess my point is, is if we, if we allow short-term rentals in the residential areas, then all of this proposed language works, because then...
We don't.
It allows these PCNs to restrict if they want to.
We don't, we don't. That, where you see short-term rental, it just says special requirements apply. That special requirements apply to all the existing grandfathered-in use.
Right, and that goes back to number nine, which says as of effective date of that. Okay, so my question is, is there, are there any instances where for planned communities or HOAs, they have allowances that are less restrictive than the municipality that they're within? You know, is that, is that something that we've seen?
Not that I'm aware of.
So that, I mean, in a way, that's what, that's what this does.
Less restrictive, you wouldn't be allowed to do that by law, I mean...
Right, but I guess, as I read this, that's kind of how this sounds, is that it's less restrictive than the underlying ordinance?
Well, no, because...
Because you're creating a new definition, a new use.
We have, not like we haven't thought to, we've spent some time thinking through this, so, so, yes.
I'm sure.
So, yes, or no.
Well, just walk me through it, and then I'll see.
So, no, it is not, because...
That covers it all.
Because, you're, you're missing this. Because you're, because we're creating that new land use definition, neighborhood housing accommodation, that is a new land use type that is differentiated, and then we seat it on the table, so then we seat it on a table in the various zoning districts that could occur, so it does not then become less restrictive in that area.
As we're layering our original zoning changes.
That's only because NHA is not an STR.
That is correct. And why is it not an, and why is it not an STR?
Because it exists within a different land classification.
And because it's, and it's because it's, it's managed through a master association, and that is, and that is the, that is the major difference between, between the, between that issue.
I guess in terms of which, and to, to correct how I was quoted in the pilot last time, I do think it's our responsibility to send something to the village council that they can use and approve. I think that's our responsibility. I agree with you, and I appreciate being your sounding board. And as I think about what that would look like, I think, I feel like that's a missing piece of how we'd describe the ability of this. I mean, I guess technically, it's a workaround, but I, I feel like that's not, it's not hidden, and it's not intended to be, but I just feel like that's a, that's a hole that needs to be plugged, is, maybe that's to Jeremy's point, is there a different way to do it? But I don't know that it's, it doesn't make sense to me in rational thought to be less restrictive in these areas and more, because I don't think there's any...
It's not less restrictive, because we created the new, the new, the planned community neighborhood and the neighborhood housing accommodation.
But how many, how, take the condo associations out of it. When it's applied, I mean, how many properties can actually meet this definition? I mean, the likelihood of that is so, so low, where you're basically restricting this availability to, you know, I feel like you could, you could...
We're speculating. I mean, we're speculating, we don't, people could band together in a twenty-unit subdivision to do this relatively easy. I just say that, because it's sound, twenty, doesn't sound like it's hard getting twenty people to agree, but...
Well, that's, I think you flip it. The strength of this is in flipping it. Allow them, allow it in the, in all the zoning areas, and then allow the PCN for the purpose of restricting it, where at least twenty or more come together and say, this, we're not going to allow this here. And then they can be more prohibitive. I mean, to me, that's more defensible. Obviously, that's a different direction, but as you've said, the council is looking at this as a way to not just add it on, but to amend what they've done already, then let's look at that as, what's the strongest way to amend it? Is to give people the, the ability to come and say, okay, we want to restrict it, rather than, hey, we want to come around.
We've already restricted it.
Yeah, or you can look at, you know, hey, the decision I made...
Might be a change.
Yeah, I mean, you have a, a change of thought, the decision I made, now I want to push the decision that I made down to, you know, multiple communities. Okay, now it's going to require effort and work on their part, some cost, maybe not significant cost, but it's going to provide a lot of consternation within all these communities. It's already provided a lot of consternation within, you know, the town. I mean, so now we're going to go, Jack's List thirty, it could be more, you know, they're going to have the same discussions that we've been having for six, eight, ten months. I mean, you know, hey, I made a decision, now I'm going to, I don't want to say reverse, but my decision is now that I'm going to pass this decision down to someone else, and it, you know, without line, without clear lines of communications, or, you know, as you push that down. So now you're going to have thirty folks who are running around trying to get their board of directors influenced, or their two-thirds influenced, to either approve or disapprove. I think that's just, I think we're passing a burden on all these communities, these residents, and everybody else.
Well, and I'd go back to the, the purpose as stated in September for the original change in, in regulation. Take all of the multifamily out of that.
I would completely agree with you.
I mean, it's, because the, the concern wasn't for any multifamily, so take, take those out. You know, you still have at least a handful of places where this could happen.
And then those communities have an opportunity for the HOAs or the boards to vote whether they approve that or not. That's giving them a decision.
Well, and what's, if the, if the, the goal is to have a, you know, a responsible, if a, if a master association is more responsible for governance of these, I'll call them short-term rentals, neighborhood housing accommodations, if you want to, what's saying that, you know, landowners who utilize a property manager are less responsible, you know? I feel like it's just, you're threading a needle, and, you know, it's overly, overly specific, and, and, you know, you're, again, basically creating a right that technically, yes, we, I could get twenty neighbors together. The likelihood of that happening, I think, is just, I'll start buying lottery tickets, you know?
Yeah, there's a better chance.
Mathematically, realistically, I don't know.
What I would argue, though, not argue, I would say that, whereas before with the, with the SDR question, it was, it was all over the place. So it was unregulated, there was, it was totally unregulated. I think with this particular, what they did, we put a cap on it, right? So we stopped. But we said, all right, let's go back and let's take another look. Let's, let's start looking at this thing in a different way. We've controlled them now, right? So we, we've started, we've got the control. Now we're, now we're looking at modifying that control to extend it out, to apply to something like this, where it is, where the, the principle, or the idea, the concept, is this essentially managed through one thing. You just raised, you raised a point with property managers. Maybe that's something we need to consider down the road, or something like, something similar to that. But this is starting with one development, managed centrally through that, through that, through that master association. So it's a start. I think it's a start in the right direction.
Just for one development? I mean...
It's not for one development.
Oh, okay, okay.
The intent is not for one development.
All right, I misunderstood what you just said.
How many currently could this apply to?
I do not know. I mean, Jack said potentially, there's probably...
Not potentially, but how many currently?
There's probably only one in the community that currently applies for.
Is there a problem if we regulate, as we've done, that, you know, the short-term rentals can't have those going forward unless they reapply? Can we not, you know, establish that same type of grandfather provision for this neighborhood housing? And eliminate the concern about...
We still have, by, everything's grandfathered in, that was in. We can't create it, you can't create anymore, that's it. Unless you're in a, unless you're in a hotel district, or what's it, VMU, you cannot create any more STRs.
What was the number that was grandfathered in? Four hundred and...
I don't know if it's that many.
I don't think there is a number.
Maybe I'm misusing the term grandfathered in. Just establish this new category.
And that's another problem.
But they had to be, they had to be, you know, in existence.
Yeah, you can't register them, so.
I mean, it's a concept. I mean, that's, that's another, that's another...
Everything you feel like you...
Yeah, I mean, I think...
Doesn't want to be a carve-out.
I think I've tried to be as clear as, as possible. It's just, the, I don't care what you call it, it's, it's a short-term rental, and the, I think having a, I get it. I think the communities that have these master associations in place, that, that can self-govern, so to speak, they should be able to. I, I don't have any issue with that. It's that, that same right has been taken away from everyone else in the Village of Pinehurst by virtue of not living in one of these communities. And although some people, you know, that could be more valuable to some people, you know, not being able to have a short-term rental somewhere, to others, it's, it's, whether you utilize it or not, it's a right that I had, and now I don't. And what's, what's the reason for that?
But people choose to live in communities with associations, sometimes for a reason, not always, but sometimes for a reason. The reason being, it's, you know, they have wonderful open space that they maintain, it has facilities that I want to, you know, that are for the residents and so forth. And so they choose a community for its amenities, in some, in most, in many cases, not all cases, obviously. But if that being the case, one of the amenities can be that, should I want to, this association has taken advantage of something called a neighborhood housing accommodation provision, such that I don't plan to be here all the time, but my neighbors and the whole community recognizes that I can turn this to the executive board master association, and they can, in fact, then lease the unit for me. I guess that's the concept here. And it's a wonderful benefit that you're granting these people, but yes, it's true that you're, you're not giving that to the rest of the community.
And where, I mean, if you look at where this can apply, you're creating, it's almost wealth discrimination in a way, because the communities that have these master associations, and if you list them off, you know, I, I, I'm not aware of the facts, I don't specifically have those numbers, but I'd be willing to gamble on it that the average home price or the, the value of those properties is higher, or there's more resource available, taking multifamily out of it, taking all the condos out of it, single, single-family residential, because that's what we're protecting. I, I, I see a problem with that.
Here's another question. In the table of uses...
Yes.
Sorry.
Get back to something that, that's tangible on here.
You can go, but can you come back to me after you're done? In the table of uses, moving a use to different area doesn't change what the use is. So for instance, if I have a...
David, you out?
If I have a, a business in my home, but it doesn't receive traffic, it's allowed in certain residential districts, but if I'm receiving customers, and that makes me not, not allowed, right? So the nature of it changes. But the only difference between SR nine and SR ten in the definition is where it is. I mean, even definition, SR ten still says you have to abide by SR nine. So to me...
There's, there's, there's some significant differences between nine and ten.
But what, what is the difference between nine and ten besides the fact that it's in a PCN?
You got to show documentation that it is.
Well, I...
PCN, there's no difference in the screening.
Well, in theory, it's, the actual rental itself is...
That's the only thing, though.
No, it's not.
In theory, at least, the actual rental itself is managed by the association, and the vetting of who's going to show up in the house next door, or the unit next door, is in fact, you're more comfortable that it's been vetted correctly. I mean, that's, I guess, in theory...
Well, right, but I'm saying, as far as use goes, the use is the same between an SDR and a, and a NHA. The only difference in one B, C, I mean, one B, C, and D, and E, I guess, but E's the anomaly, is that it's related to this PCN. So what other use in the table is, can be called a different name in a different area only because it's in a different area? Like, the use is the same. The management of it, sure, that's different.
That is different.
But to me, that doesn't change the use. Does it, is that a different use?
That's a good point.
What was that?
The applicability of an SR or not potentially could be how you differentiate them through the different districts, but the same use.
The use is a use, I guess, wherever it is.
As it's defined, yes.
Some of the different residential districts allow for different uses within that district. For instance, I think, what is it, the R two-ten allows a bed and breakfast, doesn't it? Yeah, so we...
And an ADU.
And an ADU. So they are, they're, they're a different, you know, we do have different requirements in some of these different districts, so...
Well, right, yeah, different, but they're different uses. Like, you say the use isn't allowed. I guess I'm saying, there's no, there's no bed and breakfast for R ten, that's a bed and breakfast for multifamily, and it's different because, well, this is multifamily, and this one's in R ten. And that's, I think, what's, what's happening here between SR nine and SR ten.
And I...
Not that it can't be gotten around, I'm just seeing that as a potential...
Kind of brings me back to kind of what our question was earlier, really. I mean, Darren, is there another way to achieve this, what possibly we're trying to achieve?
I don't know. I mean, as of right now, what is before us is what we're asking, and what you're going to potentially be asking, and what, we're having all good philosophical discussions on why somebody may not end up voting for this, all right? That's not advancing this, this, this is going to advance forward at some point. Right now, as far as I, as far as I've been told, it's going to continue to advance. They've not asked me to look at another method, changing zoning, creating another zoning district. That's, that's, that's...
Do you want to hear some details about the documentation and the wording?
That's what I, that is really what, that's why, that's why I got you here.
I think the table as you have it, with, as it is without the highlights, that's what it's going to take.
Did you say...
It's not an error.
I'm ready.
What's that?
Did you say vote earlier?
I didn't. Vote?
I was just saying.
No action tonight.
No, there's no, there's no, no, I said, there's no action.
Can we talk about the landscape buffer?
Yes, but I wanted to get, let's, let's, let's get back to the definitions. Jack was, Jack had some very good comments about some of the, some of the discussions that we've had. Are there any other things that we need to consider with this, with this language, or additional language, not counter language at this point, but language that bolsters whatever, or improves on what's here? And if we're not prepared to talk about it tonight, that's fine.
I don't think you should create a new definition. I think you should use the SR nine definition and somehow qualify it for PCNs, because I just don't think it more, it's a different use enough.
Why do you even have to, why do you even have to create the new definition, just call it multifamily? I mean, we originally started this with, you know, single-family resident communities. I mean, that was...
That's correct.
So we've meandered around so many times and changed fa, you know, here's the facts we're going to start to solve this problem with. We've changed the facts as we went through this problem.
You're not changing any of the facts. This is just, this is just another point, this is another direction that we've been asked to, to examine, and I, I understand...
Yeah, could you, can you add to SR nine additional requirements that refer to your new PCN definition?
You can put in XSR, and part of that special requirement would include must be within a planned...
within a planned community neighborhood and governed by executive board and include neighborhood housing accommodation.
That is a good.
Finest declarations.
That is a good point, that's a good point of discussion that we will take back and we will talk about that with our council.
Okay, I mean, good points, Alex, but I mean, do we want to add, you know, what Jack had mentioned, like a two-third vote? You know, if not, you know, you may have a HOA that is just completely governed by three board of directors and then here's the remainder.
No, but.
I mean, I don't know how.
The ownership.
You know, we're starting to get into business that we probably shouldn't be in, but if we're going to go that far, let's just go ahead and hit the, just go to the end of the street.
A three-quarters vote of the board or the members of the HOA?
But aren't the boards?
Owners.
The owners, well, you know, we, you know, I, I kind of highlighted the concern last time.
We're almost asking to change our own bylaws, right?
I highlighted the concern last time of manipulation of that, of the lot owners could be really centralized.
You know, and here, you know, and here we are, here we're trying to insinuate, you know, we're trying to insinuate private, you know, HOAs on what they should have or shouldn't have within their bylaws.
No, we, we don't want to micromanage it. You know, the definitions.
And we're not microman, we're, we are not micromanaging. We're just saying that if you want to provide for a neighborhood housing accommodation.
Here's the standard you need to meet.
That's it, that, that's it.
Maybe a couple of comments on the, on the, on the first one, the planned unit neighborhood. My own, my question would be, where it talks about property owners within the PCN are obligated to pay real property taxes, et cetera, et cetera. What if there is no assessment? What if in fact the, the planned neighborhood does not necessarily do an assessment? Some do and some don't. There are, there are associations that are very close to this that don't necessarily have associations or, or require property owners to, to pay for things. So that's just something to think about.
There's an or in there, there might be other, so there, there might be some where there are no expenses by, by any owners within the neighborhood?
Well, you can figure out the words, I'm just bringing up the point.
Okay.
So now on the.
This comes from statute too.
On the declarations, here's a question, is it what, is it, is it true that these declarations must be registered in the recorder of deeds in the Moore County and be part of each unit owner's deed? Just a thought, maybe that ought to be.
They have to be, right?
Well, yeah, it'd have to be, but I'm saying maybe that's redundant.
Okay, oh, I got it.
Under the definition of neighborhood housing accommodation, it says it's a whole house, and I understand why that's whole house is there, because this relates to something that's previously in the, in the definitions for short-term rentals. But should it be emphasized that, that there is no, that it is a whole house in the sense that, let me just read it. Is a whole house dwelling occupancy where a dwelling unit located within a planned community neighborhood is managed through a master association and, consider the following words, and the entire dwelling unit is leased, offered, or made available? I'm just reemphasizing that it isn't a partial lease. It was just.
Because it might be whole.
Just to reemphasize the whole, the point. Other than that, I mean, a lot of it comes out of, you know, forty-seven F, you know, the state stuff.
The planned community statute, that's where we'd, I mean, that, honestly, the planned community statute was the, was the.
And you notice in the.
Was the document that we used to.
And you'll notice in the planned community statute, the state statute, does not require members of the executive board or board of directors to be unit owners.
I did not, you raised that, I, I wrote that down, and that's something that maybe we, something that we maybe need to consider.
Appreciatingly difficult, but you can read all twenty-one pages of it.
No, I missed that part and I, I did, I made a note on that. It's not, it's, they're responsible to verify it to us. We're going to have to read something? Not all the, we're going to have to read, we're not going to have to read, read all of them.
And I assume SR ten, and as you mentioned previously when we discussed this, that the, the submission of documentation of the masterization rules and regulations pertaining to the operation would imply that there was some type of association, majority agreement to these rules and regulations.
Yeah, you did talk about that.
That could be, that could be legal. Okay, never mind. That's my few comments.
I don't have any comments on the definitions, Jack's covered them. I think definitions are helpful, I, mine are on the uses.
I know they're on the uses. Anybody else?
Bon, to you next.
I mean, let's move on, we can move on to the, we can move on to the use table. Now, let's go, let's, let's go down, let's first, let's go to, now, let's go down to, let's, let's go down to SR ten and take into math consideration of potentially combining them. So we would propose to create SR ten neighborhood, neighborhood housing, neighborhood housing accommodation. After effective date of the ordinance, all neighborhood housing accommodations shall be required to obtain a development permit. It's very important that we have that, you have to get a development permit, because if we give you a permit, we can revoke a permit. Then regardless, regardless of whether it's in the PCN, we can still revoke that development permit. So that's why, you know, that's why we have that provision in there.
So the, the development permit that allows for short-term rentals within the planned unit, would it cover all?
Neighborhood housing accommodations.
Bullet cover all the particular units in that association? Or is it just designated units?
Just anyone who's gotten the development permit. So you'd have to, you'd be required to have to get a development permit to provide the neighborhood housing.
Each unit that the master association wishes to manage the lease of less than thirty days has to be.
Permitted.
Permitted, okay.
That's correct.
That's interesting.
That's correct.
Furdle to go through. Wow.
It's not, I mean.
It's not trivial. No, that, it shouldn't be trivial, right?
So, blah, blah, blah.
Only question which relates to my previous soliloquy about whether or not there should be some documentation that this is in the declarations. I mean, you have it pertaining to the rules and regulations, so that's my only question. You ought to ponder that, because declarations are considerably more difficult to change and implement and modify than rules and regulations.
Yeah, I, I needed to hear that. So, and I wrote a note and figured out how we can redefine that or bolster that. So the, the standards are compliance with, and this word, Matt, pick it up, compliance with SR nine standards A through K. And what those are, are those basic requirements such as smoke detectors, building size, parking, all that. So that, I didn't want to have to reinforce that and put that up here. But the, the main differences are these, are these four. Submission of documentation and contact information that the neighborhood housing accommodation is located within a planned community neighborhood as defined in, in section ten point two of this ordinance, that would become part of the development approval process. Submission of documentation of master association rules and regulations pertaining to the operation of NHA. So we want that to be on file somewhere. Submission of documentation that the neighborhood housing accommodation has been authorized by the master association. So we want something that says the master association has approved this. And then E, which is I think up to, up for some, some discussion, because, you know, as staff, we've, we've, we've talked about this in various permutations of it, where we might have issues, but installation of a landscape screen per section nine point five point one three along the property line adjacent to the residential use not part of the planned community development.
How you would do that?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure, sure about that one.
The, the additional landscape buffer, what's?
What about if, what about if the, the way the building's laid out of the terrain doesn't allow that? You know, so normally buffer, you know, the discussions we've had with buffers, it's, you know, pre-construction. So pre-construction, you define your buffers, it's, or, or change where there's a space, there's not the space or terrain between them.
There should be, well, there should be enough, because theoretically what we're talking about is we're, we're talking about a side or rear yard, right? So most of the time we're talking about a side or rear yard. You should have enough room to install a, a landscape buffer in your rear yard or potentially your side yard.
So this would be the entire perimeter of the community would need a landscape buffer?
No, I think the thought would be on an, on an individual lot basis wherever, wherever that.
Just those individual lots? Oh, my goodness.
I mean, that's, that's. I mean, what we're, what we're trying to do is if we're going to allow something like this, we're trying to mitigate that impact and the complaints that we get from the adjacent, the adjacent, potentially the complaints that we get from adjacent property owners that are not within that neighborhood, not within that, not within that area.
Well, wouldn't you, couldn't this rest upon the master association that's approving this? Because in part of their rules and regulations be if you want to be part of this rental program, you have to install buffers? I mean, couldn't they?
Yes.
Couldn't they in fact, you know, require this rather than the, rather than the village getting into the landscape buffers, you know, on each individual property?
Well, the intent of the landscape buffer is to mitigate to the adjacent property owner, right?
I mean, that could be part of your development permit.
That's what I'm saying.
That says, does the individual units that you plan to lease, do they have landscape buffers or will they install landscape buffers? Just ask that question as part of the development permit rather than have it part of the PDO.
If, if you don't have it part of the PDO, then it wouldn't be required.
No, but it can be part of the documentation required, that you in fact have addressed landscape buffers in some way.
That comes back to requirement to the PDO, right?
I know, yeah.
Where does, where does it come from? I mean, it's like, some, some neighborhoods would probably want this and some wouldn't, so why not let them even just decide if they include it or not?
Because I think the, again, the thought was for the adjacent property owner.
And how would I do this?
It wasn't, it wasn't for the STR user itself, it was for the adjacent property owner.
Right, but if the adjacent property owner doesn't, like, I mean, if they don't care and the neighbor doesn't care, it doesn't matter, you got to put it anyway.
No, that's.
Well, if you, if you had a townhouse home and there's five in a row, you're the middle one that's been approved to, you know, rent their space, would you have to, I mean, kind of being a little facetious here, I mean, you'd have to do like a U buffer, so you'd have to go out on both sides of that border and then the back, right?
No.
No?
No, that would be, we're talking about areas outside of the, outside of the PCN.
That building would have to get buffered.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it would be outside of the PCN. So this, remember, this is, if I have, if I have, if I have, if I have one development, here it is, all right. So say, say this is, this is a neighborhood, this is our PCN neighborhood, right? Just, 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 just go along with this for a minute. So this is the PCN neighborhood. So if I wanted to create neighborhood housing accommodations along here, and we have residences along here, that, the areas that are but, the outside area to the PCN, would have to provide that landscape screen in their rear yards, if it was a rear yard.
Even if you, you would have to probably have a buffer anyways.
I used a bad example because it's, because it's a road there. Pardon me?
You would have to, have, already have a buffer, wouldn't you?
I don't think necessarily you do, unless we, and the other thing we could say is landscape buffer or opaque fencing or something like that. You could put a fence in there, so you got to put a fence back here. I don't, we, we threw that on to, to try and mitigate any concerns that we might have on that. If, if at the end of the day we don't think it makes sense, it's not like we're, it's not like we, we, we need to have it. If you don't, if you don't see a world where, where it's needed, can always pull it out. That was mitigated. You're, you're, I, I want to hear problems why this, this is a problem, but that concerns why this is, this is a potential problem that we put on somebody requesting this, not on the adjacent.
Anything but, you know, single-family residential neighborhoods that, that apply this, it's going to be very difficult to implement this, don't you think so?
It's difficult to put a landscape in your rear yard. I, I just.
Between two, two townhouses or around one townhouse building, I mean.
Then you don't do it.
Or even worse is condos, what am I going to do?
A lot of the condos won't even have that issue, because a lot of them are, a lot of them are set adjacent to a golf course, so you don't, that golf course is not, it's not a, that's a different type of use.
It's not a residential use, right?
Correct. But one subdivision boarding another subdivision, that's what I'm, that's, that's the thought. That perimeter, that, that perimeter where those two, where those two boundary meets. Theoretically, there should be room to do it, but if we, if we think this is, if we don't think this is a good idea, then other than the other parts of this that you don't think are a good idea, we can, we can, we can say, they don't think it's a good idea and we'll share, I'll share that with the village council. I'm sure that some are watching right now.
Well, at some point we'll have the opportunity to vote on this and that'll be our voice, I'm sure, as it comes back, right?
This is not the last we're going to see this.
This is not our last we're here.
I had another great idea.
You did?
Instead of moving these to nine as only applying to PCNs, if you take B, C, and D, and you make them, as maybe as Bruce said, or maybe it was David, I think Bruce, like, owner-specific, you could have these apply to B, C, and D, apply to properties, individual properties.
Yes, that's the idea.
So it's, it's, you're, you're looking for management of the rental and whether that's from a neighborhood or an individual. And then you move, you, you go with the table as drafted, with the SRs, and then now you're allowing SRs, but it's still restrictive in that you're requiring B, C, D in all, in, in all the places.
Correct, I mean, that, this is your development standard for the neighborhood, this is all, once you can get to the level of, of being qualified as a neighborhood housing accommodation, which we've all acknowledged is, is going to be, is not always going to be the, potentially not the easiest thing to do, then this applies, all these standards apply.
No, I'm saying move them to nine on their own and instead of neighborhood housing, instead of PCN, just make it some sort of, whatever is the management of the property. So if it's an individual that has the, the rental, then they're required to maintain, to, to abide by documentation, contact information, documentation of rules, you know, there wouldn't, D probably wouldn't apply, because there wouldn't be a master association for an individual. I guess the, if, if these are the things that make ten different and they're also the things that make it now where we want to look at allowing them, then why should they not apply to every place? And thinking of what are good things that are consistent that we could put forward, I think.
We could, we could add that to SR nine as well.
Yeah, yeah, and then put SR nine in all the zones in the table of uses.
No, we wouldn't put an X in every single one. We're not, we're not talking about putting an X under SR nine as part of this discussion.
In the brainstorming whiteboard.
We're brainstorming.
Things back and forth, I'm saying, I think.
I know, I know.
If you come up with B, C, and D and they're good, I think they're good if they're good enough for PCN and they're good enough to apply to all the zoning districts.
Council can certainly take that into consideration.
Darren, just so I'm clear, so an NHA, it, it must be managed by the master association, it cannot be managed by an individual, individual owner.
That's correct.
Thoughts on that further?
I, I mean, I, yeah, that's, I, I think you're, I think we're getting down so far into weeds on how individual HOAs, individual owner, property owners manage or, or choose to manage something that we're going to permit, you know, it just, I don't know, I think it's, that's too restrictive on that end.
Jack, you're nodding your head, that point?
I just, you know what I mean, I just think we're, so I own the property, I've decided to rent it and put it as a short-term rental. This modification is approved, so I can go into, you know, one of the condo communities and rent my condo less than thirty days, but I've got to go through the master association who may or may not have the right people I want to use. Now, we're forcing them now to go there to use this person, this entity as a property manager. Yeah, I think that just gets tough. I mean, I think the, you know, just the restrictions on it, and it may be good for some communities, a community, you know, but it may not be something that they want, so we, we may give or we may take away the flexibilities of the property owner, you know, if this would go through as written.
But right now they can't do it at all, so I guess.
Yes.
Even if it is tough, it's still a path, which right now in these communities, there's no path.
That's correct, there, there is no, the.
Right, right. That's right. Yeah.
Or, or you come to us and say, I would like to, I would like to change the zoning to hotel or VMU, which is unlikely. Which is, oh, I, I say that facetiously, but. All right, we're starting to get towards the end of this.
I was going to say, what other topics do you need us to discover or discuss on this? I'm sorry, discover as well?
That's a good word.
No, we've had enough conversation tonight.
Okay, let's, um.
I'm about warm, we're out on this now.
I got you.
My tank is, is half empty.
Let's go ahead and entertain some final thoughts on this unless there's any other topics that staff needs, kind of some overall feelings and thoughts. Because I think that, well, let's, let's ask this question, the next steps are council, work session, feedback from them and direction. And then the crafting of an actual ordinance, is that right?
If, if the council chooses to continue on with this direction, you should expect to see it sometime. I'm not sure what time in the future, but if the council wants to continue to move on it and they like generally what's here, we can, we can work off of that, right? We can develop something. If they don't, maybe we come back and talk about some, some further, for some further discussion. Or they terminate it, I don't think that's going to happen. So you'll probably see this in some form, great potential that there could be an ordinance amendment coming forward. It doesn't mean it's going to be this exact ordinance. There's been a lot of conversation, a lot of concerns expressed tonight. We might make some, some, some good, some wholesale changes based on this conversation.
Give overall thoughts and then we'll conclude the, the meeting.
I've said enough, but you know, it kind of looks at the process that we made to make decisions, you know, a couple of months ago. Maybe we just need to look at, relook at how we're, our process, you know, to make sure that we're making decisions that are lasting decisions. And a couple of months later, before the ink dries, we're not back relooking them. So, you know, maybe there's a better process that we could utilize collectively, you know, here and elsewhere within the community.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking about what, what it's going to look like when we get it and, you know, that if it comes similar to it is today, I feel like we're going to be not, we're not going to have something to recommend as a board to council. And not that that means that they won't have anything to decide on, but, you know, what does that look like? So I think they would have to be different for me to feel like it's consistent enough with the rest of the PDO to be not just something that they can sink their teeth into, but also that I felt like is consistent. So this, I don't know what that looks like.
Yeah, I, I think it's an interesting concept, but I think the devil's in the details. And I think we've beat around some of the details and it'd be interesting to see how others feel about those.
Well, you know, I think I go back to what are we trying to achieve? And if we're trying to achieve some flexibility within our golfing communities, I think that's one thing. But creating a, a wide defining and multiple layered ordinance in hopes that the optics from our community are that it's inclusive of all of us, I think is a little bit concerning for me, you know? And I don't think it's fair to our community or Pinehurst, you know, in, in, in all, that we do not consider and discuss alternatives to this to achieve whatever it is we're trying to achieve. My, my ultimate concern in this is, is, is new development. We, we just went through the small area plan process where we discussed multiple opportunities for, for residential development. And we, and we pinpointed the places. So now they're, you know, they all could be manipulated in my, in my opinion. You know, I think that the unintended consequences of this are truly manipulation of HOA board votes and intended and, and intention to achieve some of this. I, I, I think this could give outside interest and non-residents a path of influence on our ability of Pinehurst to be citizen centric. And that is concerning to me probably overall. You know, certainly discussed, you know, the opportunity of these board members and, and voting board members not really either being developers, being, you know, just, just outside investors, whoever. I think we're giving them a path, you know, of, of, in, in taking away some of our, our ability to being citizen centric. So there's my overall concerns.
Not having much history, do you ever convene work sessions between council and this board?
Uh, we've done that before. I think we started out and, did one last year?
That's.
I think, I think COVID got in the way. I think COVID got in the way too, didn't it?
Comprehensive plan.
Good thought, Bruce.
We did, and it, and COVID got in the way. And who knows, this may precipitate that.
Yeah.
No, I just was curious as to, you know.
Well, well, thanks to everybody. And I think we had a very heartfelt.
Yeah.
Conversation. Very honest conversation, so hopefully we got somewhere tonight. Anything else further from staff on that? So if, if, if we don't have anything further, we'll just point out that our, our next meeting is February second. It's going to be a regular meeting. We, we discussed a little bit of, of what we may be facing, facing that evening. So please be prepared as board members and then also Alex pointed out that we'll have the need for further special meetings as we move on through February and March. So I think as a board, we need to be, be thoughtful of that. And with that, I'll take a, if there's nothing else from the board, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Bruce, second by Matt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned at six o'clock even.